I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Johanna, will you read the statement of compliance?
The notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the annual meeting notice was sent to the Atlantic City Press, Star Ledger, posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, the municipal website, and filed in the office of the municipal clerk. Please turn off all electronic devices.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Attention to the oath. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and the right to life.
Johanna, please take the roll.
Mayor Collins?
Here.
Commissioner Bloomberg, Commissioner Horn?
Here.
Is there a motion for the approval of the May 15, 2025, regular meeting and workshop minutes?
Motion.
Second.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Horn?
Yes.
All right, we will now open up public comment for resolutions on today's agenda. Again, just for clarification, there will be a public comment as well at the end for general comment, but if anyone has any comment on the agenda items today, please step forward. Is there a motion to close public comment on resolutions?
Motion.
Second.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Horn?
Yes.
All right, Johanna, will you proceed, please?
May I have a motion for the introduction of ordinance number 15, 2025, an ordinance repealing a portion of the Municipal Code, Chapter 257, Section 13, vehicle and traffic of the city of Margate City, County of Atlantic, New Jersey?
Motion.
Second.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Horn?
Yes.
May I have a motion for resolution number 152, 2025, authorizing bill payment and claims?
Motion.
Second.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Horn?
Yes.
We are going to table resolution number 153, 2025, due to a lack of quorum. May I have a motion for resolution number 154, 2025, resolution requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriation for NJS 40A:4-87?
Motion.
Second.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Horn?
Yes.
May I have a motion for the consent agenda, which consists of resolution number 155, 2025, through resolution number 180, 2025?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just real quick, I did get an email, and for transparency purposes, just wanted to make sure you guys are aware. Commissioner Bloomberg did send an email and was in favor of everything on that consent agenda as well. He just wanted to make sure that he had clarified that.
Thank you.
Okay, it's noted that it's stated for the record that Commissioner Bloomberg supports the resolution. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Commissioner, Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Horn?
Yes.
All right, now we will open up the public comment. Ken, you may begin, and welcome.
Thank you very much. I guess I don't have to open up with a joke now. In all seriousness...
Could you just introduce yourself?
Again?
Because it's a separate meeting.
Sure. Again, it's Ken Dash, and I live at 9619 Pacific Avenue.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, back on January 25 of 2024, as I mentioned, several residents of our community raised many concerns about the tequila bar project, including noise, traffic safety, and the impact on property values. And after listening to these concerns and testimony from various professionals, the planning board approved the project, but thankfully, with mandatory guidelines, that the variances and bar would not cause substantial detriment to the public good. The board based its decision partly on testimony from Arthur Chu, a licensed engineer and planner in New Jersey, who testified that the pergola on the second-floor deck will have adjustable slats that will be soundproofed when closed, and that any noise generated would be subject to enforcement by the City of Margate's Noise Control Ordinance. The board agreed with Mr. Chu, and as a condition to approving the variances and project required, among other things, that the bar install a sound system in a manner that helps mitigate noise as represented during the hearing, and that the bar will comply with all conditions in the Board Engineer and Planner's Report. To date, I have never seen any soundproof adjustable slats closed, and I see no slats at all on the large, open window facing Pacific Avenue. Only non-soundproof curtains are drawn from time to time. I'm also unsure whether the slats even do close, nor do I believe the sound system was installed in a manner to mitigate noise. I live 500 feet or one block away from the bar, and the noise coming from the band last Saturday night was so loud that I could not only hear it clearly when sitting in my house with all the windows closed, but when sitting on my deck could hear it as if the noise was coming from my own speakers. I then walked three blocks down Pacific towards Washington and could hear the music all the way down. I respectfully request the commission to enforce the conditions set by the planning board, and until there is compliance, please stop the bar from having live bands and loud music, which is truly disturbing the peace. Lastly, I ask that the commission consider purchasing a sound measuring device so the noise control ordinance can be enforced. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken. Do we have any other public comment?
So, Len Neesonson, I live on 9613, then they're avenue. I can just second what Ken has said. I can hear the music through my windows. We're a condo of two row houses, I guess. My neighbor is talking about installing soundproof windows. Well, that doesn't cancel out the fact that I can't have my windows open. All I hear is loud people most of the time, from the time, you know, from dinnertime all the way till I go to sleep. I have a small child, which now is also affected by this, and overall, the situation is not great. The way I understood it, that the noise should be controlled, and the fact that there are no windows baffles me. Why would that even happen? I'm no stranger to bars, and I enjoy it myself, but at the same time, living across the street from this is unacceptable. There's no crowd control outside. Yes, there's a bouncer, but the crowd control is not there. It's loud, people are drunk all over the place. It's basically unacceptable. So, I second what Ken is asking for, and basically, I would be satisfied with the windows being put up and enjoy a couple of tequilas myself, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Len.
Good evening, Scott Pamer, 5 North Monroe, Unit A, here to talk about the same issue. The sound that's coming from this bar is outrageous. It's unreasonable. I believe it's unlawful. I know that there's a legal standard. There are people that are certified to measure sound. I'm certainly not that, but I have a device just to understand what the levels really are from the sound. They're about double on my deck. I'm 217 feet away from the tequila bar, and I hear the noise from the tequila bar as if I'm in the bar when I'm in my house. It's impossible to sleep. I have a special needs kid. I'm here for quiet and rest, and it's disturbing the entire neighborhood. It's, it needs attention. You know, when we, when this process started, we objected to it, and the owners of the bar assured us they were going to have a sound engineer, they were going to put in a sound curtain that was like $300,000, they were going to do certain things. None of that's been done. This is unmitigated. I don't want to call the police all night, but I also can't live like this. It's unfair. I believe there's a diminution of value argument. I think there are a lot of problems that stem from this, and really, at the end of the day, I believe windows would resolve the issue. I'm hoping that you take it seriously and come up with a solution that restores the neighborhood. It's, it is materially unfair for a bar to open to the detriment of the entire neighborhood. It's a pretty bar. I hope they do well, but not, not to the extent we can't live in our houses. I'd say there are other things as well that the city needs to pay attention to. People are urinating everywhere. My kid walked out, and there's some guy peeing in our lawn. We, I've had, at one point last year, I had some, last year or before, whenever they were open, I had someone park in front of my driveway. I couldn't get in. After a couple hours, I had him towed because we had nowhere to park, and then the guy wanted to get into a fight with me, you know, in front of my kid. I mean, there are so many problems. It's dark over there. There are kids in the street, you've, people coming out of that bar ripped, getting in their car, driving away. God forbid there's some sort of accident. I guess the police and the city have to deal with that, but the sound is, it's untenable. You cannot live in your house with this bar, and I've seen it. Captain Lee's here, we've called the police, the police come, they'll turn off the music when the police come, and then five seconds later, it's back on. It's unreasonable, and they're not managing themselves, so I think the city needs to help manage this for them. You know, I don't, it's, it's very frustrating that this has gone on. We're here for, you know, a few months a year. I'm here a lot of the year because I work here, but you can't be in the, like, it's just not, this is not, this is not going to work.
All right, thank you, Scott. Appreciate it.
Hi, Elizabeth O'Brien. My husband and I own Forest South Monroe, which is right next to the tequila bar. I was actually hoping, I don't know how this works here at these meetings, but if I could just show a video, you don't even need the microphone, just to see what it sounds like on our deck. We have tenants that live there. The unit that's on the second floor, closest to the tequila bar, which is about 10 or 12 feet, there's an eight-year-old girl who sleeps in there. And this is what it sounds like. Well, it's like for hours and hours on end. Then there's... This is the street in front on the corner. Looks like Bourbon Street to me. There's a security guard on the corner somewhere doing nothing. Just drunk people walking around, talking really loud. This is the band that we play to.
So, let's, I think the video, I mean, if you could share them with us or the police department afterwards, if you'd like, but...
Okay, so I just wanted to give you a little taste.
Yeah, thank you.
But I also brought visuals. I don't know if I brought the copies.
Again, I think you could submit them to us or the police department.
Okay, so what they show is, at the meeting a year ago, May 15, 24, where this was conditionally approved, there were conditions. I'm not sure if I saw the final approvals because the plans weren't there that were going to be approved. They were approved, but anyway, there were promises made. So, this is, all the trash was supposed to be kept in the roll-down door, the trash closet that they were going to build. We talked about it for hours, the engineer, the attorney, and you can't see these probably, but this is all trash bags. So, this is at 3 o'clock in the morning, this past Sunday morning, and then the next picture is 8 o'clock the next morning. So, all night, all these trash bags sat out, so we're worried about rats, rodents, you name it. It smells like a trash can where our tenants live and park. The next picture is all different people urinating on our property and theirs. This is our tenant's window where he sleeps, and the living room window, and there's literally his eight-year-old daughter could look out the window or step out onto the deck and see people just urinating all over the place.
These are six, these pictures are six individuals coming and urinating in that in one hour.
Within one hour.
On Saturday night. I just also want to add that with the trash, my wife just showed you that it's, you know, 2 o'clock in the morning, 3 o'clock in the morning, that the trash is brought down there. We were assured at the meeting that we went to last spring that there will be no trash being dealt with after 10:00 PM at night. Now, they're processing this trash, they're throwing things into the containers, there's bottles and things, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning. That trash, we other have pictures that she has here of the trash also being dealt with again for pickup before 6 o'clock in the morning, the next morning.
That's exactly where I'm at with my next picture.
Yes, so in regards to this and everybody's comments, and I'm sure, you know, there's a lot of people that have the same sentiment, as far as the zoning board approvals, that's not done by the governing body, so the conditions of zoning, that's something that is done by a separate board. We, we are aware of many of these issues between, between zoning, our police department, the commission, we're actively, you know, engaging with, with solutions for, for all of the problems. We get, we've gotten emails, you know, phone calls. The police department certainly has handled quite a bit since the holiday weekend, and all things we're actively trying to engage with to find solutions here.
I have, and I've actually spoken with you, Chief Adams.
Yes.
Nice to meet you. We spoke on the phone about the trash and the egress problem, because all of this is blocking the emergency exit. And also, we spoke about how this was supposed to be only used as an emergency exit, and I have dozens and dozens of videos and a picture right here of people just going in the back door constantly all night. These look like young, I don't know how old they are. I don't know if there's a bouncer at the back door, but they're all going in, about eight, 14 people on this occasion, there were another 10 a little while before this. I don't know, I think all the contingencies that were supposed to be, that were promised at the last meeting, I don't think, they're not keeping their promises. This door, this trash door, never closes. I don't think it actually can close. I've never, I've seen them try. We have a ring camera, that's where these are all from. I've seen different employees try to get it down, and it doesn't ever make it to the ground. So, all the rats, we're 10 feet away. We have a crawl space under our building, and, you know, we don't want to live next to a trash, you know, it smells like a subway with trash in it. It's pretty bad, so...
The police have been great. We've called them, they've come out, they've tried to do what they can, but what we're asking for is what you've already heard from some of the other neighbors, that you enforce the codes, that you give the police the ability to enforce the codes. You get them a meter, and you have the codes in place, the codes are fine, you give them the power to enforce it. That's what we're asking for.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. Gino Cantel, Keith Bennett.
I'm in apartment A, next door.
Forest South Monroe, Unit C, Unit A, honored to be annual tenants. One of the main issues is the number of guests occupying our driveway as if it's part of the restaurant, and simply treating our space like it's a new area to hang out. May 23, there were two young people who walked up the staircases to allegedly pull down their pants and moon people that they knew on the second floor at the bar, and the next day, there were three juveniles just sitting next to my car in the driveway as if it's a place for them to get together and hang out, and two of them, two other juveniles who were with them, were sitting on the upstairs steps as if it's like a public place to sit. In addition, the 25th, when I was walking my dog at about 2:30 PM, there were five men smoking marijuana together in our driveway who were drinking drinks from the bar. And one, I, I enjoy their food and drinks, I have friends who bartend there. I have no personal issues with this place at all, it's simply everything that the guests are doing, and, well, perhaps I spoke too soon, because one thing I noticed was bartenders putting beverages into plastic cups for them to leave with. I'm not even sure if that's legal, but there is litter from it on our property, our neighbor's property, everyone else's property, and bottles everywhere. The man who lives next to me in Unit D found broken glass under his car a couple nights ago, so it's, they, they put up a small gate between our properties, and that helps separate the trash, but I'm not sure how much trash it's helping separate anymore, so...
All right, thank you.
I just think they shouldn't have a band. I'm sitting in my living room, and I can hear the guy in the band talking to the crowd clear as day, and it's like he's in my living room. And then later in the night, I walk down to the Wawa, and you could hear, and that's four blocks away, you could hear the band all the way down there.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Have a good one.
You, too.
Good evening, I'm Gregory Lorenz. I live at 5 North Monroe, Unit B. Moved here almost, moved here almost four years ago, and one of the reasons why my wife and I bought this unit was because Margate is a nice, quiet town, and we were looking for a shore home for a long time, and we wanted to find a place like the one we have found to possibly move into now that we're retired. We did have a bar at the corner before the tequila bar went in there, the South End Liquors and Pizza, and it wasn't a good-looking place, but it didn't bother anyone. It was actually a convenience. You wanted to go get something to eat real quick, you could get it. They had a bar inside the liquor store, and they never had any problems. It was always quiet, no drunks coming out of there. And then we've gone through this transition, you know, the tequila bar, it's a beautiful building, but flaws have been made here. The sound from an open deck, and I mean, everybody says it's not a deck, but what else could you call it? Just, it's so, the noise never ceases at night, and it's basically, basically because we have, I would say, an average age group in this building of maybe 23 to 28 years old, and you have a lot of exuberant youth going in there who are really having a good time. I mean, if I was, if I was 25, 26, hey, I'd be upstairs blasting away, too. I'd be having a good time there, but you know what? I don't know how they do it. It's like 20 bucks for a drink in there, and I don't know where these kids are getting their money, but if I was their dad, I'd check the bank account. Anyway, a couple of things I did notice, I went in there just to see what it was like, and when we were here for the approval of this business, we were told that there would be, I think, 81 people in, on the downstairs maximum, and 81 upstairs. Is that correct?
I don't know the exact numbers upstairs, but it's 100 and... No, upstairs is 100 and...
We were told 89.
118. It's 118 upstairs. Downstairs is less, I believe.
When I, when I walked into the building, you, you turn left, you go to the end of the bar, you make a right, and then you go to like a little hallway with the stairs. I mean, this place is a fire trap. I can't believe that this was approved without better access to the upstairs. I mean, if there was ever a fire in the bottom, you'd have to jump off the, off the second floor to save yourself, and that's, that's definitely going to come back to haunt Margate someday if there's ever a fire in this building, and the way people are acting in there, there's no self-control, so I'm really disappointed at how that's been fashioned. I mean, there should have been more than one stairway up to this second floor. You've got one access way to prevent a catastrophe.
It is the code. There is a second form of egress.
Elevator?
No, second form, second set of stairs has egress.
Well, you know what? I went in there, and I had no idea where I was going, so the people that go in and out of that building are clueless if they have to save themselves. There should be better markings, and there were so many people in that building, there had to be, there had to be 300 to 400 people when I went in there on a weekend day. It was like insane how many, how many people over the limits there were, and there was nobody at the door counting anyone coming in and out. Lately, I've seen somebody checking numbers, it looks like, but somebody has to keep control. You've got to keep it at 89, if that's what the number is, and as everyone else has said, this building was not made for what it's, what it's producing. The up, the open upstairs should be baffled with windows, and that would be, probably be a helpful solution to have windows that are soundproofed that are installed by the tequila bar owners. I mean, our neighborhood is, is taking a beating here, and this is not what Margate's all about. We're, we're about civility, and to approve this and then have them act like they are, they're making our own, city government look foolish. You guys are, are not gaining any respect by allowing this to go on. You have to take this bull by the horns and lay the law down. I mean, there are statutes that say they can't be doing what they're doing, and if it was me, I'd be in a slammer if I was doing what they're doing. If I was making a lot of noise and my neighbors got upset with me, I'm sure I could be arrested and told to quiet down, or you're going in behind the bars here. So, behind the bar. Anyway, I would appreciate somebody going to these people and telling them to get some windows, quiet the place down, and become a civil business. They could have been like the, I hate to compare apples and oranges, but anyone here that goes to the Crab Trap, and I like to go to the Crab Trap with my wife. It's a nice place, nice restaurant, they have a bar in there, you can eat at the bar. This place, all it is is comfort food and a lot of drinking, and, you know, if you want Wildwood, you're going to get Wildwood, because that's where this place is taking us, and Margate should not be in the same category as Wildwood, where all the kids go, and, you know, college kids go down there and they, you know, get wasted, so I'm very disappointed that our government has let us down, and especially as a veteran. I am a veteran, Vietnam veteran, 16 months, and I fought for, for better than this, okay? I didn't kill anybody, but I got shot at, and if, if I could defend my nation, you should be defending your citizens, so let's take that to heart and do something. I think the chief was out there, and he was disrespected, I assume, and that shouldn't happen. Our police officers are going out there, I heard it was 16 times on Saturday night, and why should a police officer who, who is respected have to go out to a bar more than one time in one night? That is a joke. So, let's, let's do something for your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody, Jeff Weiner, 11 South Adams Avenue. I just wanted to thank the police department, because I really noticed a difference this year, like clearing out the kids around, you know, Wawa and the end of the block, so I definitely noticed a difference, you know, them clearing them out when I was walking from the greenhouse Friday night, so thank you for that. I feel your pain. Yeah, so, I did notice the porta-potties on the B-side. Is there any plans to have them in this area?
So, we are, Pat has a proposal in front of his desk that we got today. We're looking at, we talked at the last meeting about potentially opening up the restrooms in this building.
Okay.
During the day, we kind of diverted, and we're thinking trailer outside would be better than allowing access to the building, and we're kind of working out the details of that, but we're hoping to have restrooms right outside here, open to the public.
Okay, good. Yeah, because there's just issues with those people, you know, urinating on the side of the bushes there, you know, next to the Wawa. So, and, yeah, so the, you know, like I said, thanks to the police department for, for making that better. The Wawa regional manager's been very responsive, so, you know, when I, when I get up in the middle of the night, right to her, she, she addresses it. You know, the, right now, it's like the 1 and 5 AM range, you know, generally on the weekends. I think it's just like people who are intoxicated coming in, making noise, things like that. You know, I don't know how you, how you fix that, if you close the side parking lot, or, you know, you know, at some point, you know, you know, I'm not saying to do this necessarily, but restrict the hours, you know, that, that's the really need, and nothing, nothing good happens between 1 and 5. You know, that's what I really need, and nothing good happens between 1:00 and 5:00. So, that's all. And just one more thing. I know it's very nitpicking, but when they have the rollers on the trash, and they do that in the middle of the night, it's like heart stopping. I know it's nothing compared to what you guys are doing. But, you know, and I asked her on this, one thing the regional manager said, like, no, you know, we'll take out the trash when we take it out. So, you know, I just want to have a conversation about that as well. And then, just want to thank Public Works. I think the town looks great. They did a great job. So, it's summertime. Everybody enjoy.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Benson Goldberg, and I live at 9612 Ventnor Avenue, Unit C. I'm ahead of the condominium association. There are two other units there. We're approximately 200 yards from the tequila bar. So, all the complaints you've heard about, the video that you've heard, that noise, picture your window open, hoping to get some nice ocean breezes, and what you hear from early evening until late at night is just loud voices. And this is not... This is without any music. This is without a band. And the reason being, you've got open windows, and you've got too many people in that bar. Supposedly, when the tequila bar came here for approvals, they said, "We're only going to have a certain capacity." And my understanding of that capacity was 89 people on top, 89 people at the bottom. Clearly, the capacity has been way above that. And because of the number of voices, it just radiates throughout the neighborhood. And that's without any bands. That's without any music. So, again, it all goes hand in hand. The tequila bar, they're operating based upon their own rules and not following any of the rules that were set for them. And really, it's this government that needs to enforce that. It's really, really important because everybody around there is suffering, and we look to you to help us. So, please, help us.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Judy Chin. I represent a company called GoNetSpeed. I just wanted to give a few minutes of time to sort of introduce myself to the constituency and some of your attendees. We are an independent fiber network provider that is going to be looking to expand into the area. We did not want to just kind of show up and not let you know who we are and what we're about. Basically, we are here today because we see great potential in Margate. It is a forward-thinking community that deserves broadband infrastructure. I think some of the service that you have here is very one-sided, and we can offer a viable alternative. We are fully independent. We don't rely on any public funding. We don't answer to shareholders. We are a fiber provider that is in 11 different states at this point, and we are expanding into the Atlanta County and Middlesex County areas. We did not particularly pick this area. Our engineers picked it for us. But we did want to kind of let you know what we are about. We are a very community-centric company. We do a lot of things in partnership with both, you know, senior citizens homes, the elder population, the transient population. We try to bring something to the community that gives back, and we like to do that in partnership, understanding what some of your shortfalls may be, if there are any, and how we can accomplish, you know, achieving those goals. We are accredited by the BPU, and I will be sending information to the appropriate people. We do have connectivity. I have done this for, you know, 25 years. So, I am the boots-on-the-ground in New Jersey, and we are new, so it's not a name that you've heard. You know, we're not the Xfinity of the world. We're not the Comcast, and hey, we're the only provider and the best that you can get, and, you know, put up, shut up, pay me $200 a month, and here you go. I think we have a good viable alternative, and you will be seeing some information coming from us in the near future, but we do like to put a name to a face. So, we are here to say, you know, here we are. We're going to be sending some things out, and hopefully, it will be a good partnership for your community going forward. And I will be a lot quieter than everybody else, I promise. But if I can leave some literature and some cards that if anybody wants to, you know, go forward, and I will be sending some formal documentation with a little bit better explanation. But to keep it short, I just wanted to let you know that you're going to be hearing from us and what we are about.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I leave this with somebody?
Sure.
Thank you so very much.
Hi. Kathy Hitzman, 22 South Adams Avenue, Margate, New Jersey. I had attended that meeting in May where the O'Briens were there, and everyone was there at the planning board meeting when they made all those promises. And I spoke with Chief Adams after the... At our commissioners' meeting about the fire hazards. Something serious is going to happen, and you need to give the power to the police to stop it, to close it down when there is an issue. You cannot let this go on. I moved to Margate, as this gentleman said, who retired, because it's a wonderful community. And this is... These are all people who don't live in Margate, who are coming here to party and have a great time. I respect that. I want people to have a great time, but you have to think about your neighbors. You have to think about the people that are living around you, and I don't think that happened with the zoning board. The vote was four to one to approve it. That was a joke. And these poor people are suffering. You hear them all. We ran into this with memories last year. Now, we're having the same problem here. It's just a few blocks away. And something needs to be done now, not that we'll talk to the zoning board or we'll talk to this person or that person. You need to act now. Find them, shut them down, so that they follow our city rules as we have to do.
Thank you, Kathy. Do we have any more public comment? Is there a motion to close public comment?
Motion.
Second?
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Horn?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Horn?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.